Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the May 11th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to order. I'd like to start tonight by welcoming our two new members, Lynn Hicks and Thomas Hurley. Thank them for volunteering their time and services to Currituck County. You're welcome.
Thanks.
You're welcome. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
Our pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to a republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I almost got the Lord's Prayer there instead of the pledge of allegiance. All right. Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight?
Yes, Chairman, I believe I need to recuse myself from the discussion about the Carolina Club HOA.
All right.
Because I live there and I also own a trailer that would be nice to be able to be parked in something like that. So I'm going to step away.
Well, unless y'all have a problem, I'm okay with you staying where you are.
Yeah, I can stay where I am and just be silent.
Somebody's not okay with that. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Madam Secretary, we have a quorum with six people. And I'm assuming it'll be just five on the Carolina Club text amendment. So that's still, we're still good to go. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the March 9th, 2021 meeting minutes? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of the March 9th, 2021 meeting are approved. No old business wants a new business. We have agenda item number 3119 PB 20-12 Carolina Club Homeowners Association requests to amend the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards to allow shared parking of major recreational equipment as an accessory use in major subdivisions approved and recorded prior to January 1, 2013. Staff is recommending denial of this. And Ms. Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Asley Miller, who is an agent for the Carolina Club Homeowners Association, submitted an application to allow major subdivisions that were recorded prior to January 1st, 2013 to establish an area inside the development for shared parking of major recreational equipment. These major recreational equipment items could be anything from boats, RVs, such as campers, motorhomes, travel trailers, that type of thing. This request amends the accessory use table and requires a zoning compliance permit in the agricultural district, single-family mainland district, the SFI district, which is the single-family isolated district. Those are typically where you see residential subdivisions. This proposed amendment also includes some specific standards. And if you turn to packet page 11 and 12, the specific standards are provided for you just below the table. And what it does is it would require that the property be owned by the HOA or the Property Owners Association, and it would be within the subdivision boundaries in which that HOA or POA would have jurisdiction in. The storage cannot be in required open space. Any type of equipment that would be stored there could not be connected to a utility such as electricity, water, sewer, gas, or any other type of facility that would allow for being able to live in them or be used while they're parked or stored there. The equipment that would be parked or stored there would have to be owned by a person who owns property in the subdivision and would be in the membership. Any equipment that would be stored on site would have to have a current year's registration or license and be maintained in good repair. The board may also want to consider some language such as making sure that it's road-ready. It doesn't have flat tires. That's also good repair. The spaces would be enlarged spaces. Instead of them being their typical 10 by 20, they would be 12 by 40 and no parking in the required drive aisles. This enlarged space comes from current language that's in the ordinance. Also listed in here as a specific standard is the Type D buffer, which would be required along all property lines. There are two versions of that. As you heard earlier during the work session, there's a 10-foot and a 25-foot version of it and can be accomplished through vegetation and earth and berm planted with landscaping that meets the requirements of the Type D. You can use an opaque fence of rock-resistant wood, plastic vinyl to a minimum height to fully screen the equipment, or it can be a masonry wall. So the applicant would have the option of picking any one of those to screen. And the screen would look very similar to the image that's provided on the screen. So Darrell Hood, who was the president of the Carolina Club HOA, approached the county about a year ago, maybe even a little bit more than that, to discuss potential uses of some property that the association recently acquired from the developer. And all them, Mr. Hood and Ms. Miller, who is the agent, they are presenting a text amendment that would apply to their particular subdivision. It's intended to be used county-wide. And it would be in any existing development that is zoned agricultural, SFM, which is the single-family mainland, SFI, which is single-family isolated, in any of those districts that are in the county. When the county adopted the 2013 Unified Development Ordinance, it included some language that required subdivision, and this is the language you have on the screen, of 20 or more lots, and the lot size was, the average lot size would be 20,000 square feet or less, that they would provide a central location for the storage of this type of equipment, boats, RVs, and similar type items. And it would accommodate two 20 by 40 parking spaces for every 20 dwelling units or one for every 10. That's a requirement. It needed to also be gravelled or some type of surface material. You just couldn't park them on grass. And it would have to be maintained in a safe and efficient manner to provide ingress and egress. So that's the current language. These older developments, the ones that were approved, recorded prior to January 1st, 2013, are not subject to this. Typically, you would not see a development put it in unless they were required to. But that doesn't mean that there are not some out there that did it on their own. This is something that would be after the fact. After a subdivision went to record, they would come in with, if this gets adopted, come in with a plan that shows compliance with the ordinance and allow for the parking or storage. The image down at the bottom of the screen is a site that's in River's Edge. It was taken early, probably early 2010, 2011. But it does show the facility as it exists, and there was screening in place. To give you some reference of how this text amendment could be implemented or would be implemented, I wanted to give you some reference of three developments that were approved prior to 2013 that had shared area for equipment storage, recreational equipment storage. This is an image of Eagle Creek. And it is located, it's central to the development, but it's on the perimeter of the development. Eagle Creek has 426 lots, and they have about 1.7 acres dedicated to recreational vehicle and equipment storage. This is Laurel Woods Estates, located just south of the courthouse. They had a planned area inside of their development, also centrally located in the development, but along the perimeter as well. It is, Laurel Woods Estates has 160 lots, and the size of the facility is about a half acre. River's Edge has a facility as well. It was planned when the subdivision was originally recorded. River's Edge consists of 128 lots, and the storage area is about a quarter of an acre. So looking at those three, the one that's being proposed in the Carolina Club would be along the perimeter of the development. It's very similar to the one that's shown here for Eagle Creek, where you'd have an access coming in alongside of some existing houses, and the storage area would be along the perimeter of the development. So a couple of things I'd like to go over with the board before we start talking about the review standards. And it's primarily the concerns that staff has with this text amendment. And we've been working with the applicant to try to address many of these items. But in the end, it is the applicant's request, and we don't want to change their language, but hope that through this conversation that we have tonight that we can either address or eliminate staff concerns or at least put us in a point where we can start chipping away at those. And most of the time, it's related to compatibility. And that's, compatibility comes into play when you have really development around you. And when these subdivisions that were recorded prior to 2013 go to record and they show open space or they show areas on their plan, people will sometimes buy those lots thinking that that's what's going to be developed around them, meaning open space or meaning open land area or a lot, a potential lot. And that may be more desirable to them. After they build their house, if something comes in later, it may be something that is less desirable, that had they known about it on the onset, they probably wouldn't have purchased it. Or they would have planted some trees early on so that they would at least be up and grown and the impacts would be lessened. So when we're thinking about the text amendment with this application, we're looking at it as if it were next to you. Because if you have an established residence, what are those things, if your subdivision had major equipment storage, what are those things that would concern you? Would it be access? Would it be the amount of traffic going in and out of there? Would it be lighting? Would it be noise? Would it be stormwater? Could it be just the fact that there's storage behind you? Is it aesthetics? Which are key things that we talk about when we look at these review standards and how it's compatible with those land uses. So I did want to go over that with you. And when you're thinking about the text amendment and how it addresses those compatibility issues and looking at the review standards, trying to implement those review standards with any changes that this board might consider or that the applicant might propose. The accessory use language as presented really doesn't appear to be inconsistent with any of the goals and objectives in the land use plan. But it doesn't necessarily provide sufficient language to address those impacts that we just spoke about associated with the use and the activities. And without the adequate review and evaluation of a recorded and established subdivision, all of them, we don't feel like that it's going to be easy to say. We feel like it's going to be more difficult to ensure that that proposed development and the proposed text amendment will maintain a high quality of aesthetics and standards for the development. And that's in our Unified Development Ordinance. When we talk about the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance is to make sure that we have the high-quality aesthetic standards. They are proposing a Type D buffer around the perimeter. We might want to hone in on that with some fencing and make sure that, you know, as you've heard tonight, there are options with that Type D buffer. You can just do vegetation. You can put a fence up that will give you some immediate relief with noise and visual elements of the use. So we believe that that's very important and addresses the compatibility. When you are looking at this, is it consistent with the goals and objectives of the policies of the land use plan and other adopted county plans? Now, as I mentioned, the use itself, it's not inconsistent, and we wouldn't say it's really consistent. It's the elements of the use that present compatibility issues that may make it inconsistent. And whether or not it's in conflict with any provision of the ordinance or any code of ordinances, the use in and of itself isn't in conflict with the ordinance because it currently allows for subdivisions. If you are in that threshold of more than 20 lots, less than an average of 20,000 square feet of area, you're required to put it in. So I wouldn't say that it's in conflict with that. Is a result or required by changed conditions? And does it address a demonstrated community need? Is it consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts and the ordinance? And would it improve compatibility among the uses and ensure an efficient development within the county? So far as it being consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts, if you are developing a subdivision today, you would plan that at the very beginning. It would go through the process, adjoining property owners. If it is a subdivision that would require a use permit, the property owners who are adjoining this particular development could come in and present evidence if they felt that that use or if they could demonstrate that that use would have a negative impact on their property values, they have the opportunity to present that evidence. If it's after the fact and not really planned at the beginning, then if we do it as a zoning permit, those adjoining property owners lose the ability to do that because it would be permitted by right. And we believe that if you have an established home, having a use that is borderline commercial, it's outdoor storage, could have an impact on those adjacent property owners. And you'd have the ability to evaluate each individual property as it came in. Is it adjacent to established homes? What are they doing to help offset the noise? Help offset the visual component of that outdoor storage? What is the size of that facility related to the rest of the development? Related to the homes around there? Those could all be evaluated through the use permit or as we'll hear tonight, will be changed to the special use permit process. So as it's presented to you tonight, we would recommend denial because we don't feel like it is consistent with the land use plan statements and goals, specifically the vision statement. And we don't feel like it would ensure that the proposed activities would provide an aesthetically pleasing environment. And also the land use plan development goals to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the suitability of land, the infrastructure available, and most importantly, the compatibility of the surrounding land uses. We don't believe that this request as presented is reasonable and in the public interest because it will not result in a logical and orderly development pattern and does not establish a mechanism such as a use permit to review the location, the design, the actual operations of the shared parking so that we can determine compatibility with the surrounding land uses. Do I believe we can get to that point? Yes, I do. I believe we can put some language in there through a use permit process that could evaluate each one of these concerns. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
So the notice that landowners get when things happen sometimes in the county, for the text amendment tonight, no adjacent landowners got that notice.
Adjacent landowners were notified.
But through the special use process, using the new language, I guess, they would be.
Yes, and the downside of that is, you know, when you're doing a subdivision, and this is more from the HOA's perspective. From staff's perspective, it's the most suitable way to do that to give those adjacent landowners the ability to present any evidence that they may have that could affect their property values. But from the other side of that coin, it also puts the same burden of proof on the HOA or the Property Owners Association that might be coming in with an application to use that property for that intended purpose. Because they're going to have to prove or present evidence that it will not devalue or injure the adjoining or abutting property values. And that might mean hiring an expert to present evidence at a board meeting. So that's the downside. It will cost a little bit more money by having to hire the expert, but we feel like that process and evaluation would lend itself more protection for those around there. The applicant might be able to present to you tonight and give you assurances that you feel like addresses compatibility and you feel like that you could approve it based on that information presented to you.
Do the adjacent property owners actually know that this is happening now? I mean, the current adjacent property owners, are they aware rather than, you know, formal notification, or do they have any knowledge of?
I'll let the applicant address that from a staff's perspective. I have trouble saying that word tonight. From a staff's perspective, we have not notified them. We have not sent them any type of legal notification or any information that would say, hey, there are plans behind you to place recreational park area storage on property that immediately adjoins you. So I'd let the applicant address that. I would assume that they've probably had conversations at least from an association level. Anything else?
Any more questions? No, I think we're good. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone present to represent the case tonight?
Come on up. Could you please state your name and address for the record over there?
My name's Darrell Hood. I live at 173 Carolina Club Drive in the Carolina Club, president of the Board of Directors. And I have with me Vice President Sandy Davidson that lives at
Cheese Arena.
Carolina Club Drive.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come meet with you tonight. We are laypeople at this first time, so we have a good, strong board. And we've spent a lot of time working on this ever since we received this package from the planning staff. So first thing, I guess, to mention is start at the top, I guess. In the background, what we found is at the bottom in background, it says, "It is not typical for residential development, not subject to Section 6.1.3E to provide shared parking areas within the development." So we were just wondering if "not typical" means it's unwanted. Is that something the county doesn't want? Okay, next is, "And outstanding staff concerns." Should I read this or to you? "With residential subdivisions, the developer dedicates area on the final plat as open space. The dedicated area is transferred to the homeowners association, and the association maintains and controls the common area. Required open space is allocated for passive or active recreational uses, public facilities, conservative conservation areas, farming or forested lands. The final plat provides clarity and assurances that the open space will be used for these activities. When a developer records a subdivision, sells lots referencing the plat, the purchaser or owner has expectations, assurances, and rights that the development will occur as depicted on the plat. A property owner may find an increased value to particular lot because of the surrounding land uses such as an open space. This does not mean final plats cannot be changed. By agreement of the property owners 100% and compliance with county regulations and dedications in the land use allocations can't be changed." And there's nobody in the county that understands this better than the Carolina Club at this point. After we spent, we bought these two different parcels and through a lot of, I don't know what you call it, we found out after we bought this property that we could not revise the plat without 100% of our membership voting to say we could. We had no idea. But this parcel is not allowed to record. It was a preliminary plat that was never recorded. And as I understand, that expires after three years. So if it's not recorded, then I don't think anybody has any rights or expectations as to what's going to go there. Another one of our concerns is the administrative review does not allow an adjacent property owner not in the subdivision input by the adjacent owners and factored into the public process. Establishing a process similar to the major subdivision review could better evaluate the location and activities associated with the shared parking, et cetera. But our concern is that if in districts agricultural, single-family, SFM and SFI, crab sheds are allowed. So is crab shedding more, less attractive, I mean, more attractive than a well-established parking for boats, campers, and trailers, et cetera? And another concern is when shared parking is provided in a new subdivision, is planned at the onset and can become an amenity to the property owners in the development. The maintenance of these areas is extremely important to adjoining properties. Well, we feel like if the community already doesn't allow parking for boats, campers, and trailers in your driveways, which is strictly enforced, which is strictly enforced, and is willing to spend money for this use, then is it really a concern about long-term maintenance? If the association, whether or not they would allow this, you know, to get out of hand, be unmaintained? I mean, if there is strict controls over the subdivision with no parking, et cetera, in the driveways? I know particularly, I can speak for our association, that there would be a high standard set on that area as well. Okay, with the text amendment review standards, already it's been stated that it is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the land use plan and other applicable county adopted plans. It is not in conflict with any provision of this ordinance or the county code of ordinances. Okay, so it is required by changed conditions. We feel the changed conditions is, I know I can speak for our community, is the growth and popularity of boating and camping. I can, I know it's really become a way more popular in our association. Addresses a demonstrated community need. Well, from, from what I can tell, there is a true lack of spaces in the county which kind of speaks to the need for more spaces. It is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts in this ordinance or would improve compatibility among the uses and ensure efficient development within the county. Well, we feel it preserves land by allowing consolidated storage for communities. It reduces demand for more storage lots by using our available land. Would result in a logical and orderly development pattern. Well, it would allow for small communities in the county to provide storage options as opposed to illegal storage and non-conforming businesses who are forcing homeowners to violate the covenants. And seven, would not result in significant adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and the natural functioning of the environment. We feel that this parking has no impact on the environment. So then the staff recommendation. We feel that it meets intent because it fosters a compatible accessory residential use near residential uses, which will conserve, conserve the value of the buildings and land. We also feel it helps conserve high-quality development value by allowing continued use of restricted covenants because we would have to amend our documents to allow parking in driveways, which would devalue our properties, we feel. So for all these reasons, this is how we feel like, you know, this should pass and go through and allow us to do this.
All right. I believe we want to try to make this happen for you, if we can, one way or the other. I know staff has made some recommendations as well. Are you, are you opposed to us tabling this and working with staff a little longer?
No, I think that would be great.
To come to terms?
I think it'd be a great idea because this, I mean, it really was kind of like a little bit of a whirlwind when we got this report from staff. And we weren't expecting them to like oppose this. So I think that probably, yes, that'd be a good idea. And I would like to respond to your question that you asked of whether surrounding properties had been notified about this. There's only one property that's not a member of our association. That's Harold and Beth Walton. And they're long-term residents of the county. And when we bought, first bought the property and cleared it, it really, since we were clearing so much so close to them, just went and spoke to them to let them know what we had going on and tried to work with them. We didn't want to take too many of their trees to decrease their buffer and just wanted to work with them. And when I spoke to Harold, he said, yeah, well, when we bought this, we knew something was going to go over there. He's like, you know, it's your land, not ours. So I know, I know sometimes people say, and then when the rubber hits the road, they still say the same thing. But it was genuine. And I felt that again. And again, it was not a lot of record. I mean, I understand the personal property rights on a recorded plat, but this is, this is not what this is, so.
Do you feel like you could get 100% of the people in your Carolina Club to agree to it?
I could get 100% of anybody to do anything, to tell you the truth.
Sure, just checking.
Let me ask you a question. Okay, in this subdivision, you cannot park in your driveway boats, recreational vehicles, things like that, in your driveway, correct?
Correct, for more than 48 hours.
For more than 48 hours. But there's a marine in the subdivision.
Yes, you're right.
All right. So your group bought this property. Was it purchased by the homeowners association?
It was, it was.
So this is new land that wasn't part of the original plat of the subdivision.
It was part of the original proposed. I mean, as I recall, it was going to be three lots possibly.
But y'all, y'all bought this recently, if that's correct.
We did. We bought it, we bought that parcel and a parcel out front, which is directly connected to our amenity area, which is, which is reserved utility open space, I know you're familiar with. And so in the offer from the developer to us, it was really very complicated, made lots and twists and turns. There were 11 and a half months before we wrote the check. With a lot of, we engaged with lots of different entities the whole time because our intent was to take the reserve utility designation from the front parcel, right by our clubhouse pool tennis court, etc., so that we had the ability to expand. Take their reserve utility designation, put it on the back parcel, which is less suitable for, it's like five acres out back in a pond, and a lot of it's right beside the golf course where things, people, things might get hit by golf balls. So we're like, perfect, we can move that back there. And then a couple of months after we bought the property, it came to our attention that we could not move it unless we had 100% of the association to sign off on it. And so really has been, you know, didn't go over well with the membership, to say the least, that we spent that kind of money. But I will say that after that, the county, the county staff, management, county attorney, he was the biggest threshold, the biggest hurdle and worked with us. And they allowed us to move our septic field and repair area for our clubhouse to the reserve utility open space, similar use, which would allow us to expand out on our septic field and repair area. So that was good.
Anybody else? But you're not, you're not opposed to tabling this tonight and working with staff and try to come to terms on how we can move forward with it?
No, I would have suggested that myself.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
All right, I'll open the floor for public comment. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak on the item. Anybody else want to speak on this? All right, don't see anybody, close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussion?
This time? Anybody?
All right. Hearing done, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll motion to table this and let them work with the staff to clarify some of the concerns that staff has.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, she could hear Juanita.
Juanita, motion to table it.
I motion to table.
And Mr. Dolls, a second.
Sorry, I'll speak up.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. All right. Do you know, I guess y'all get with him and when it'll be back?
We'll shoot for next one.
Next item. We have agenda, item number 3121 PB 21-08 Truck Accessories Center. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 5, Development Standards to Allow Off-Site Storage and Display of Recreational Vehicles and Trailers Associated with an Existing Business. And Mr. Linnell, there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Truck Accessories Center, you guys are probably familiar with. They sell RVs, trailers, similar items up there near the welcome center, near the county line. They've been in business in the county for quite some time. And their business has grown to the point where they now need more storage of recreational vehicles and the like than their current site can hold. So they are proposing a text amendment to allow off-site storage of said equipment with some proposed restrictions. And I want to start by saying that we are going to be recommending denial of the text amendment as it was submitted, but we feel like there are some changes that were made to it that hopefully the applicant would agree with, and we could feel comfortable recommending approval. So as the amendment was proposed, and I'll go through each one of these briefly just so you can kind of get an idea of where the changes that we suggested are coming from. The first and main point is that they had proposed this as an amendment to Chapter 5 and under the parking standards, off-street parking. And we feel like that that's not really the most appropriate section of the ordinance to put it in, that what they're actually doing is more akin to storage than it is parking. So we have, the main difference being that we proposed to put this in Chapter 4 under specific standards for vehicle sales. So it would just be an additional item under those specific standards that would detail how this can or cannot happen. So A, what they proposed, we did actually keep. It requires that the off-site storage area be no more than 2,000 feet from the existing business. And that there would be no pedestrian way required between those two areas if they are on different sides of the state-maintained highway or a street right-of-way. B, when the area designated for off-site storage of recreational vehicles applies public right-of-way perimeter landscaping strips would be required in compliance with so-and-so sections 5.25 and 5.26 of the ordinance. We feel like that that is already a requirement in the ordinance if you have a vehicle use area. And we're just going to take a twofold approach to that. One is let the existing landscaping ordinance provide for those requirements. And also, as you'll see later, we have suggested including a type D buffer around this use to screen it from not only the highway but other off-site views. C, they had proposed an opaque fence as a method of screening. And the ordinance now has two options for a type D buffer, which we're proposing, which, one of which does include a fence. So they would have the option of using a fence of certain height and then some additional plantings. Or they could even eliminate the fence altogether and just provide more plants in a wider space. So that will be addressed with our proposed changes as well. And then there are a lot of things in here about the maintenance and upkeep of the parking area because they are proposing to be allowed to store these on grass and/or gravel as opposed to, say, a display area where the ordinance would require it to be paved. For example, for auto, for automobile sales display area, you would have to pave it or put concrete down. But those are more typical standard display areas where you would have folks walking around and looking at different vehicles. This seems to be more of just a storage area so that, so the surface material shouldn't matter quite as much. We did include in our proposed changes to keep their suggestion about being able to support a fire truck and have a turnaround area for emergency vehicles. That was their letter F. And we have chosen to keep that as our proposed change number three. So that's pretty much sums up the differences there. And I'm going to go ahead and go through what we have proposed as the actual language that we would be comfortable approving. So again, like I say, number one, we've kept the 2,000-foot distance with no required pedestrian way. And then the one we added was the area designated for off-site storage of recreational vehicles, which faces or is visible from, any public right-of-way shall be screened with a type D buffer yard. There are several places in the ordinance now where we say not only facing but visible from, and that kind of protects your view as you're driving either way on the highway. Because really, if you just have a fence in the front, your view is only blocked from the use right as you're going by. And most of the time you're approaching or leaving is where you get most of the view from that. So we felt like it was appropriate to do that on what would amount to three sides of this use. And then for the back screening, it would be whatever the ordinance already requires if there are different zoning districts abutting each other there. Whatever the ordinance would already require would apply in the back. So if you had a residence back there, then they would be already protected by the ordinance with some type of buffer anyway. And then number three, like I say, the turnaround for the emergency vehicles able to gravel, able to support 75,000 pounds. So that would allow them to use the grass for the storage part that they wanted to have, but also be a little safer. The request, including staff changes, would be consistent with the land use plan, particular policy ED1 for new and expanding industries and businesses. And And if staff suggested changes are included, it would also be reasonable and in the public interest with that buffer being provided for off-site use. And if you were considering this as presented, we would have to recommend denial.
And we have to consider it as presented, correct?
Well, you...
We can only vote on what's in front of us.
He's saying, if that was his recommended changes.
Yeah, you can include the staff changes if you choose to, and then we would recommend approval at that point.
Okay. But because from what you said, the original, the original application puts it under parking.
Correct.
Which is a totally different animal than storage.
Correct.
I mean, when you say parking, then it implies that people are going back and forth and moving and...
Mm-hmm. Right, it's not a long-term thing.
Right.
It's a, you're coming to do business here and then you're leaving.
Right.
Or even a short-term parking lot, it would be different.
Totally different, and that's what the applicant requested.
They proposed that under that section. Now, like I say, that a lot of the language that is still, is still there, so the intent is the same, and it's just going to go in a different place.
If we were to approve it with staff recommended changes, it would go to Chapter Four, not five?
It would. It would. Yep.
Are any...
Are they here?
Kathleen is here from Quivell and Associates. Yeah, she's...
I see her hiding back there now.
You want to ask her some questions?
I was just making sure somebody was here.
Yep. We spoke briefly about the changes that were made because they, we kind of happened on the fly recently, so I've spoken to her about those.
Okay.
Well...
Yeah, I was just making sure they were here and aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Jason? Mr. Hicks, you're back in it now.
I know, I know. It's pretty straightforward, obviously. They presented it as parking, and you chose to put it as storage, and it looks to me like you've done a pretty good job of sorting it out because the point I was reaching to the other day was when you get into parking, you get into a lot more pavement.
Yeah.
Things like that, and automatically that just drew my attention, and it seems to be counter when we're trying to make sure we don't have too much pavement in the county that all of a sudden would require a storage area to be something like pavement that would not work out well with the general, that mostly runoff and very low infiltration.
Hmm, and we generally in the ordinance don't have requirements for surface materials in a storage situation. It's really just parking and circulation.
All right, anybody else?
So the only people over there would be them, the, the land or the business obtaining the trailer or the mobile home and bringing it over across the street, so there will be no public...
I can't say that for sure. I have not had a specific conversation with the applicant of whether there will never be a person go over there.
I mean, it won't be a sales area.
Yeah. Logically, it would make sense not to have folks try to cross the highway and peruse the other side.
Right.
But I can't really say that for sure.
And there's no implications by doing this that would, would affect other areas of the county? You know, as, as the first, the first case we had where, you know, the concern was that, you know, making a change would, would just lead to issues from subdivision to subdivision. This is pretty standard if we put it under the storage section of the UDF. Everything is pretty much standardized, everything that's already there.
Yeah, and I mean, this would apply countywide to any business that is selling RVs. So I'm not aware of another one at this particular moment, but if there was one to open up, they could also take advantage of this off-site.
If they had a land to do it.
Yeah, right, within two thousand feet and so on and so forth, yep.
Good question.
Because that is, that is a concern of staff, is that this would apply countywide to any other RV business, RV, selling RVs that comes in. But that's where we, we kind of weighed, you know, the, the positives and the negatives in this situation. Maybe a little bit more positives will come out of this and negatives, but that is a concern, that any business that sells RVs would have, would be open to this, this option.
Specifically RVs.
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 And so, and trailers.
Or something, or you know, something that was selling boats, and they wanted to do the same thing, does it change because it's not an RV?
Um, it's specifically geared, the way this is written, for RVs, recreational vehicles. Vehicles. So it's very, it's, it's very narrow. To, to alleviate some of our concerns, we've kind of made it as narrow as we can about the, the recreational vehicles.
It also says existing business, so would that still apply to a new business? Or would it only apply to an existing business?
We would hope somebody wouldn't open up and then immediately need an off-site storage area.
This is true.
They would be existing for a year.
They would be existing there.
Yeah, or even...
Yeah. Change that word and just say whatever, yeah.
That's up to y'all. I was just clarifying. I'm fine with it the way it is.
And it is storage. It's supposed to be storage, nothing more.
Yeah, it is that.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? I think we're good. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone present to represent the case tonight? Could you state your name and address for sure?
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Saunders. I'm with Quivell and Associates, we're at eighty-four sixty-six Keritok Highway, here on behalf of the Truck Accessories Center though, Frank Bernard, the owner. And we've reviewed the changes from staff that were recently done. We do appreciate the consideration for having a gravel parking lot, and we understand that they've shifted us to a different area of the ordinance, and I think we are okay with the changes. I would like to say, as far as in support of the text amendment review standards, that I feel like the text amendment is needed based on required changed conditions as well as addressing a demonstrated community need because the business has grown so much and everything has changed in that area of Moyoc since he started. That's why he needs this text amendment, so that he can have additional storage for the RVs and trailers that he currently sells. As far as the demonstrated community need, I mean, he brings in employees, he's got people on staff that work for him within Keritok County, and it's a, a good business for the county to have. So that is all I've got. Do you have any questions for me as far as technical questions on the text amendment?
Are you okay with the recommended staff?
Recommended changes that staff has proposed? Yes, yes, and we, we appreciate the consideration for the gravel drive.
Perfect.
The type-D buffer, have they decided what they were going to use for that buffer?
It has not been decided yet. No, initially, we had talked about landscaping, but it, it may be beneficial to him if he's got to put a fence up to, you know, for security purposes as well. He might want to go ahead and do that anyways, since that's an option for the type-D buffer.
Anyone else? I think we're good. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'll open the floor for public comment. Don't see anybody. Close the public hearing. Any questions? Discussion at this time? Hearing now, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve PB twenty-one dash zero-eight Truck Accessories Center because the request is consistent with the land use plan, policy ED one, and the request with the staff suggested changes is reasonable and in the public interest because a type-D buffer yard will provide appropriate screening from off-site views.
We have a motion?
Are you, I'm, can I? Are you doing the staff recommendations or as, as it has been?
It says with the staff suggested changes. I'm assuming that covers it?
Thank you.
I think you're good, yeah. That covers it.
A second.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next item. We have item number three-one-two-zero PB twenty-one dash oh-nine Keritok County, one-sixty-D. This term. The request to amend Unified Development Ordinance Chapters one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, and ten for compliance with North Carolina General Statute, Chapter one-sixty-D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Thank you.
As we discussed briefly in the work session prior to the meeting, this text amendment is required because of changes to the North Carolina General Statutes regarding development regulations of the state. Let's see, it was about a five-year process, I guess, since the proposal to amend those general statutes were proposed by the NC Bar Association and was finally approved by the General Assembly. And actually, the legislation is currently already in effect, and local governments have until July first of this year to adopt a conforming, conforming amendments to our ordinances. So we're on track to do that by July first. Again, the, the purpose of the rewriting of the General Statutes, Chapter one-sixty-D, was to consolidate the general statutes regarding city and county authority with respect to develop the regulations, consolidate them, remove redundancies, clarify provisions if necessary, and create a more logical, coherent, and user-friendly organization. There aren't any major policy changes in the scope of authority granted to local governments. Fortunately for us, a lot of the changes that are required, we've already incorporated over the years. I would say probably because we're, we're just kind of progressive like that and we're a little bit ahead of the curve, so. Is that good? That's good. I'll tell you when our county attorney... Good, good, yeah. And speaking of the county attorney, he is very helpful in reviewing these changes with us to make sure that we're getting them right, and also the UNC School of Government has been very helpful in providing guidance for implementing these ordinance, these statutes into our ordinances. They provide a checklist and all kinds of workshops, and so here's our shot at the, the changes to the ordinance.
So while Jenny's going to that, she's going to toot everyone else's horn, I'm going to toot Jenny's horn because this has been a massive undertaking, even though a lot of the changes we have already incorporated because we are so progressive, but this has been a big undertaking to get this into compliance with the new one-sixty-D. So kudos to Jenny. Like I said, while she's giving everybody else kudos, kudos to her.
Thanks. So I'll just go through the items that you have in your, in your staff report that, that are starting on packet page thirty. Item one, which is Chapter One, revising general statute references, amending auto adoption language for our flood maps and flood insurance studies. There was a minor change to that language that I provided to you during the work session there. If, if I'm going through too quickly, or you have questions, just stop me, and we could just go ahead and address those as we go through. Then one of the big changes in the one-sixty-D is to terminology that's used. The general statutes require us to call use permits, special use permits, so that's a lot of the changes in the ordinance. Another, this is under item two, as well as, as item one. Just, I will note that we're striking through on page thirty-seven of your packet, conditional use zoning districts, those are no longer allowable, and we actually didn't have any in the county, replacing that section with providing that use permits, conditional use permits, and special use permits that have previously been issued and are still valid will become special use permits when this ordinance is adopted. Chapter two, terminology updates, and then also, there is a, an important change here that the staff is recommending making, is that we revise the technical review committee recommendation for special use permits and type-two preliminary plats. Instead of the TRC actually recommending on those use permits, they, the TRC will review and provide comment. One of the other big changes to the terminology in one-sixty-D is quasi-judicial hearings are going to be referred to as evidentiary hearings to make it more clear for individuals who are, are attending these hearings that that is the purpose, is to prevent, present evidence to the board so the board can make findings. This board doesn't currently hear quasi-judicial cases or sit as a quasi-judicial body. You may recall, some of you are on the board, several years ago, we actually, use permits used to come to the planning board, but we, they go directly to the Board of Commissioners because of that process, that evidentiary hearing, quasi-judicial process, and to try to eliminate any ex parte communication. And then there's also the issue of if you make a finding here at the planning board and it goes to the Board of Commissioners, it, it has to be remade at the Board of Commissioners. They can't really use that finding in their hearing, so that's, that's another big part of the one-sixty-D changes. And so staff will, will likely still provide very similar comments to what we already do with use permits, what regarding policies that may be applicable, but we won't actually have a recommendation of approval or denial in the staff reports for those, for those applications.
And just to add a little bit to that, the board, the Board of Commissioners felt like such an emphasis has been placed on the evidentiary hearing and making those findings a fact and, and, and having expert witness and expert testimony, and that sometimes, a lot of times, staff is not going to hear that or see that information prior to sitting in the hearing and going over our staff report, that that was maybe putting too much responsibility on staff to make a recommendation without hearing that, but just allowing us to make comments and concerns and then making, and putting the onus on the elected officials who will hear all the testimony and then make that finding the fact.
I think it's safe to say that staff agrees with that change, that that's something that makes us more comfortable in providing comments as opposed to a recommendation for that type of permit. Still under item two, the updating terminology again, some more changes to the, the review and comment for those special use permit types of permits, changing the reference that I just mentioned from quasi-judicial public hearing to evidentiary hearing, and then the county attorney did have on page fifty-seven of your packet, he did have some comments about some existing language regarding cross-examination in those evidentiary hearings that he asked us to clarify. So for text amendment applications, we did add provisions. I got to go back real quick to the conflict of interest and conduct language, so that's, that's another big change to the ordinance, is that that, that language regarding conduct and conflict of interest is implemented into the ordinance for the Board of Commissioners, this board, the Board of Adjustment, the TRC, and the Director of the Department. And with those changes, we also updated ordinance to require that rules of procedure for this board, as well as the Board of Adjustment, need to be posted on the county's website. Now to the text amendment language on page fifty-nine of your packet, there's additional language that, that this board shall advise on for text amendment applications, shall advise on and comment on whether the proposed text amendment is consistent with two-point-four-point-two V-eight-V, two-point-two V-eight-V, and that is the statement of consistency that describes whether the decision is consistent with all county adopted plans, and shall make a written, so this board shall make a written recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that addresses plan consistency and other matters deemed appropriate by this board. So the board will get that in writing, but will not be bound by that recommendation. There's also a change that the meeting minutes, um, of the Board of Commissioners must state that, that at the time of the decision, that the board was aware of and considered this board's recommendations and relevant, uh, portions of county plans. Uh, there's similar language incorporated for zoning map amendments. Another, uh, important update regarding zoning map amendments is that if the Board of Commissioners chooses to approve a rezoning that's inconsistent with the county's land use plan or, or future land use map, uh, then that decision will not be, if that rezoning will not be effective until, uh, that goes through the KAMA land use plan update process, which that's the reference there, General Statute 113A, 110. So, the board can make a, a zoning, uh, map amendment that's not consistent with the land use plan, but it will not be effective until it goes through that process. Uh, similar language is provided for conditional rezonings on page 65. And also, as I mentioned in the work session, with conditional rezonings, those are not effective until the owner and applicant provide written consent to mutually agreed conditions, uh, imposed by the Board of Commissioners as part of that, uh, conditional rezoning. Again, the same standard regarding, if a conditional rezoning's inconsistent with the land use plan, future land use map, um, that's not effective until that process is, um, complete, the process of updating the future land use map is complete. There's also in this section, a, a minor terminology change of the term deviation to modification. Same in, uh, subsection 2.4.5 for plan development, a change in, uh, the plan consistency statement language, as well as, uh, the deviation to modification update, that's just consistent with the language in the statute. The special use permit, uh, is updated to reflect, or it was use permit, it will now be special use permit, to update the use permit terminology, it says special use permit. And then for the special use permit, there's also added condition that the owner or applicant shall provide written consent to conditions imposed by the Board of Commissioners prior to issuance of that special use permit. In the subdivision section, there's more terminology updates and then more of that, the change to the TRC recommendation that the TRC will, uh, provide comments on the, on the preliminary plat review, but not necessarily, uh, recommend approval or denial of that. More terminology updates with respect to deviation and modification. The next few changes there in item two have to do with expiration of certain permits. Uh, there's a default rule that permits are valid for 12 months unless, uh, it's altered by a state or local rule. So we've updated expiration dates for the zoning compliance permit, sign permit, flood plan development permit, and clear cutting permit, uh, all to, uh, 12 months. Section, subsection 2.4.14 on page 80 of your packet. That's for variance, that's just a simple change of quasi-judicial public hearing to evidentiary hearing. And then, in the appeal language on that next page, uh, another change of, of that terminology of quasi-judicial to evidentiary hearing. Under the development agreement, we are correcting general statute references. And then there is one other zoning permit that is in the back of that chapter that will also, the zoning compliance permit, island development, will, uh, expire and, uh, go from six months to one year expiration. Item three is Chapter Three, zoning districts, and that's all just simple updates from use permit to special use permit. So we could go ahead and flip over to page 95, which is item four, uh, Chapter Four, Use Standards. Again, just terminology changes from use permit to special use permit. Item five, go ahead and flip over to page 120 of your packet. This is a change, more changes for terminology, and then also, uh, this is just a terminology change that, uh, in a prior, you guys heard the Plan Unit Development text amendment one or two months ago, I can't, two months ago, um, about the fire training facility, um, when that came to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner McCord suggested that we change that, uh, reference from police to law enforcement. So it wasn't a part of that text amendment, but we, we have changed that here with 160D. Item six, subdivision is general statute references updated and terminology updates. We also, for performance guarantees, added a surety bond as an allowable form, a performance guarantee. Item seven, uh, in Chapter Nine, enforcement, uh, we've updated the procedure to provide for, allow, uh, electronic delivery of, uh, a violation, a notice of violation. And then there's a requirement that the, the director or designated knee prepare an affidavit affirming that the appropriate notice was given. Then in the enforcement remedies and penalties, section 9.6.1, uh, we've included, uh, stop recorder language, um, provide for an affidavit affirming notice for that as well. And we revised the revocation language for that, um, on, on packet page 129. That if you're going to revoke, uh, a permit, it has to go through the same process that was required for issuance of that approval or permit. Item eight is, uh, the definitions. There's another change there, police firing EMS to law enforcement firing EMS facilities. Amending the definition of appeal, existing development. That's general statute, I, I didn't remember updating that, but it's just simple general statute updates. Uh, we are amending the definition of planning director, uh, Type II preliminary plat, a lot of this has to do with just that use permit terminology again popping up. And we provided definitions for, uh, some new definitions for close familiar relationship. That's because of those conflict of interest standards that we've added, reference, uh, close familiar relationship, and, and we've, we've defined that like the state does. Uh, we've added a definition for commissioner for evidentiary hearing, uh, quasi-judicial decision, special use permit, and we deleted the definitions of quasi-judicial public hearing and use permit. And then item nine is, the, um, the county manager is restructuring our department and rebranding our department. And so, item nine is to change any ordinance references to update the term planning director to director, and to update our department name to Development Services Director, I mean Development Services Department where it appears in the ordinance. And I did not keep up with my slides. So again, for the third time, text amendment review standards, I won't read those. Staff recommends approval of the requests as, um, with the changes submitted to your agenda packet tonight, and suggest that the, uh, the amendment is consistent with the 2006 land use plan, land use and development goal number 10, to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the suitability of land, infrastructure available, and compatibility of surround, surrounding land uses. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it amends the UDO for consistency with the general statutes. Any questions?
Anyone? I think we're good.
Just one, one point of, just for the motion when it comes, I did hand out some revised language prior to the meeting in the work session.
We have one.
What's that?
We have one.
Yeah, you have a motion sheet, I just want to make sure that the, how, how the motion, if they, they make the motion, that it captures all of those changes in the motion, so.
To make a reference to either the, the most recent or the revised, uh, the staff report that you all received, uh, here at the meeting, uh, include that in your, in your motion.
The revised changes or suggested changes, what, what revised?
I think revised.
Okay.
Revised staff report. Revised changes will be fine.
Okay. Well. Any discussion on any of that? I know y'all understood all of it, right?
Well, I, I understood it was an awful lot of work. An awful lot of work to go through, word by word, when words mean something. Have to change it word by word to get it to be consistent, so good work.
Y'all went through the buck a couple times.
A few, yeah, a few times. Jenny's probably, her eyes are blurry and she's, she's over, she's over working on the UDO for a little bit, I think.
Well, staff recommends approval, I've never seen the font that large.
Want to emphasize the point. We've worked hard on this.
Yeah.
That was good.
So, yeah, the most, the majority of this, um, that's before you, it is required by general statute. We've worked some, some of those other things in, um, because they were very, they're not housekeeping, but they're not changing true policy either, we're clarifying some things. And they, they were done at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, so, um, small changes that were incorporated into this.
All right. Any discussion? Anyone? All right. Well, hearing now, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve, uh, PB 21-09, including the revised changes, because the request is consistent with the land use development and goal number 10 of the 2006 land use plan, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it amends the UDO for compliance with North Carolina general statutes.
And, and would you mind including the recommended?
I did.
He did.
I said revised, yeah, I said I move to approve PB 21-09, including the revised changes.
Perfect. We have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a second? Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. All right. That's it for tonight, right? Anyone have any announcements?
No, um, other than welcome to our, our new member.
Welcome new members. Thank you guys for all the hard work on, uh, on everything tonight. And I'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.